Good evening. This work session of the ISD 279 School Board is being held in the second floor Media Center of Northview Middle School on Tuesday, February 11th, 2025. The work session is being audio recorded. Recording will be made available on the district website within two business days after the work session has ended. With regard to the audio recording, our communications staff has asked that we share a friendly reminder that side conversations during the work session are picked up by the recorder and can affect sound quality. Also, conversations during transitions between agenda items are on the recording as well. The intent of the school board work session is to allow for school board discussion of topics. Work sessions do not include an opportunity for audience members to address the board. To acknowledge attendance this evening, I'll ask that all present at the table state their names, starting with the person to the left.
Tanya Prince, school board member.
Brian Bass, this is superintendent for Equity and Achievement.
Kelsey Dawson, school board member.
Brian Severson Hall, executive director of Community Engagement.
Kate Law, executive director of Community Engagement.
Sarah Mitchell, school board member.
Amy Paris, executive director of Technology.
Don Scherzler, executive director of HR.
Steve Pulisca, assistant superintendent of the elementary.
Helen McLeod, director of Community Services.
John Morstall, executive director of Planning and Operations.
Erica Pastor, school board member.
Keith Tate, school board member.
Kim Heil, superintendent.
And I, Thomas Brooks, am present. The purpose of school board work sessions is to build trust and teamwork, to exchange information, and when applicable, to provide direction in order to facilitate efficient and effective decision-making at regular board meetings. Dr. Heil, will you please introduce Northview Middle School's principles?
Yes, thank you Vice Chair Brooks. It's a pleasure to see you here and hold our work session here at Northview. So we're gonna have Principal Diana Blood Soul brag about her school. Thank you.
I've got a sound voice, can you hear me? Wonderful. Thank you all for being here at Northview Middle School, home of the Knights. This is my record here as principal, actually my full name is Billy because I was a student here back in 1990. So I'm excited to have you all here for our first meeting. It's a great place to be, and I hope that you have enjoyed your time with us today. Just do a short presentation here. If there's a timekeeper in here, make sure you do it. I can talk forever. Not rude, alright? But we do focus as students and descendants, not just a slogan for us, it is a part of what we do. And my goal today is to help you understand with the work we do here at Northview Middle School to support student achievement. Specifically, I want you to know who we are and what we do. Each one of you should have a document in front of you. This is called our COMP. This outlines a promise that we have made to our school community from which we center all of our work around. It really supports our vision, which is about inspiring our students with an inclusive, responsive environment. And we do that by ensuring that we are the best trackers available to support our students that we serve. We also have seven commitments that we can read there. I'm not gonna read it to you because you're grownups, but even the things that we call our school tradition that we do every single day all go off the gears. And what I do wanna talk more about is the commitments themselves and how they show up in our building. For example, we believe that we're responsive at the school by providing a meaningful, encouraging, safe environment that fosters the whole child and focuses on student strength. How that shows up in our building, we sent Veronica to look up there regarding her first one, the chess champion for Princeton Park, who was at Northview Middle School last year, was in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, found his niche in after-school programming in the chess club, and has taken that to the neighborhood community center, and is now a chess champion within Princeton Park, and is considered a new soul. You can see on the right there, we offer opportunities for our students to learn about being safe and having fun through our assemblies, and then making sure they represent our pride by being respectful, responsible, and safe. We put a lot of work and energy into PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Intervention Support, to make sure our students are safe and inclusive in our school environment. If they can fly like Charles Her, not only here, but outside in the school community as well. We're also responsive by ensuring that we have included data-driven best practices and instruction that meets the individual needs of our students, improves our student achievement, and promotes growth. What you'll see at Northview Middle School is you'll see opportunities for students to be supported in smaller group environments, whether that's if they need to be supported with special education services, English language services, if they struggle in reading and math. Our goal is to identify those needs and make sure that there's a support link to every single student. Ms. Anderson, who's in the back there, our assistant principal, does a fantastic job of looking through student data with our student support team to make sure that we know what our students need and each and every one, and I can say it confidently, each and every one of our students gets their needs met here by the use of our data. And we also not just focus on students that have special needs, but also students that are looking to thrive and grow and move on what we, in the high school and college, by what with Abbott, to support them on their journey for college and career readiness as well. So I'm very proud of the fact that we know each student, we know what they need, and we provide the supports and resources for those students. We also are responsive in a way that we hold ourselves as adults in this building, and what I mean by that is we engage in cultural, continued professional development about ourselves, about our kids, so we can understand the diverse students that we serve in our building. It is our job to ensure that our students see themselves in our school community. I always say, our diversity is our strength. We are a school that serves 92% students of color, and I wish when I came here back in 1990 that the school that we have now was a school that I had been, because I didn't see myself in the school. But now I know that our students see themselves in the school community, because we work hard to challenge our own biases and make sure that we're connected with our kids in a way that meets them, not in just in terms of racial culture, but also I mean, I'm knocking on 50 here today, because we got 11, 12, and 13-year-olds here, a whole different generation, right? So we're also looking at them as a generational culture as well. But our role is to make sure that we become better and better for the students that are in front of us, not the students that we had in the past, but the students that are in front of us today. We also do that, it's not just what we say, but it's also what we do. And some things that I'm really proud of as the principal of Northview Middle School is that when our students have been asked, and this is the 22, 23 student stakeholder survey data, you're probably saying like, why didn't she use last year's data? Well, it was a little bit wonky in terms of its implementation, and so I trusted it from the year and the year prior, just because there are not as many students that could have taken it, should have taken it, and just the implementation was a little bit off. It's just what it was, right? But when we asked our kids in the 22, 23 school year, do you like the way you learn in class? In this class, do you learn a lot every single day? And my teacher makes learning enjoyable. They said yes, to the same level other district peers as well. And so that's really important to me, that we say we're gonna do these things, and our students are saying, yes, you are doing these things for us. When we take a look at our family stakeholder survey data from last year, we wouldn't ask 87% of our families to see that their kids are getting the support that they need. And again, I said, we are targeting students who are using it to get them support, and our parents, not all of them, so there's always room for growth, and when they get to grow, our parents are saying, yes, you are giving my students the support that they need. And then, we've been recognized by MBE for the last five or six years of being in this middle school in terms of PBIS. And what that means to us is that we're supporting positive social behaviors and the climate that supports student achievement as well. So our kids are saying it, our fathers are saying it, and the greater sayings are saying it as well, that we are meeting our commitments and keeping our promises. We're also looking at inspiring our kids with challenging opportunities, including academically, that's responsive and rigorous, that can be going to Three Rivers Park to learn about exploration through our gym classes and fire classes. They can also be our students being creative and having their art displayed at the E S C. We are giving them environments where they are fully connected with the curriculum that might be not traditional in a school. And then we are also ensuring that our students are having, are being part of a literacy-rich environment. Our students come further, our students aren't always at proficiency levels when they come to Northview Middle School, and we understand that we need to grow them quickly, specifically their reading levels, and to do that, they need to see, they need to see reading everywhere. And so what you can see is we have literacy-rich classrooms, which that means they're focused on social studies, they're focused on reading, science, they're focused on reading, ELA, of course, they're focused on reading, math, they're focused on reading, because we know we need to infuse our literature in their lives to grow them as readers. What she just came through was our media center. We're doing a blind date with a book, which is a really positive initiative that we've done for about three years. Our students come from the ELA classrooms, they're given a random bag with a random book in it, just to pique their interest. So they're not judging a book on its cover, they're getting a few books so they can score something that they might not have wanted. And this is one of our most popular media center events throughout the year. The kids are very excited about it. We also have a therapy doc that showed them the second picture there. Her name's Sadie, she's from Kentucky, she's 12, a little bit older than she was, but a little bit fluffier too. But what she is, she's a therapy doc. And sometimes our kids don't feel comfortable reading in front of their peers, in front of their teacher, but I'll tell you what, they'll come and read it. And our goal is to get them reading, because the more we do, the better we really become. And so we have multiple opportunities for kids to participate in literature, even if they're not comfortable with it. And Sadie is a pretty big chick in the building, she walks along her way, she opens that place. We also have some points of pride related to that as well. Again, we have strategies in place, but it isn't enough for me until we actually are having some outcomes that are strong from my perspective. Good is fine, but I wanna be great, that's our goal. And so when we took a look, take a look at point five, our students who received special education services learned growth rates and needed to exceed the district on the reading test last year, alright? Number two, our students who received English language services met their and have been being their MC Aables for at least the last two years. And I pick out those special populations, because those are oftentimes the hardest populations to meet in a positive trajectory. And the work that we have done in our building has helped those groups that are oftentimes marginalized or disenfranchised make positive outcomes in their, in their daily experiences here at Northview Middle School. And then number three, when surveyed on the 22, 23 family stakeholder survey, and I did 22, 23 because this question is not on the current survey, Dr. Ha, I'm just saying, if you wanna put that back on there, I would love that. But I'm really proud of this, because 100% of our families surveyed believe that their students' experience is as good as students in other schools in our district and neighboring communities. One of the things that we at Northview Middle School have to overcome is reputation. Back in 1990s, life was born, started, and maybe it was me, I don't know, but I'm here to change it. But one of those reputations is, is that the scholar's experience isn't as good here as other schools in the district or the community. Our families that were surveyed in 22, 23 school year think otherwise. And that makes me very proud. And I promise it wasn't me, I was a reputation, and I'm a good kid. And then we also wanna inspire our community and our students by providing a partnership with our families and making sure that they're, that they feel communicated with, that they feel there's multiple opportunities in the building for them to access or involve in communication. We do that in a variety of ways. We have a standard newsletter once a month that goes out, a smores, a smores newsletter that goes out to families. That is one way for our families to engage. You might not be able to come to the building, but doesn't mean you don't want to engage. Maybe you work in a heat, and we need to give you another way to engage in the school community. The cool thing about the smores newsletter is it's, you can have hyperlinks, they can watch videos, they can see pictures, so it allows families to engage in a way that's comfortable. And we have got about 517 students in the building, when I send it out once a month, I get about 695 views, because that is, that is something that people engage with, because it's important to them. And it's easily accessible for them, write an email, or even send a text message to their cell phones via talking points, which is another method of communication that we have for our families. And the nice thing about talking points is that I can send a message in English if your preferred language is Russian, or Spanish, or Mongol, or Somali, or Arabic, or all the other languages that are spoken in this building, that will come to you in that format, so that you can read it again, so you can engage in the school environment. Not everybody's comfortable coming into the school environment. My mother, many, many years ago, was from Germany, she just sent me to school, because she was like, school's different in America. I don't feel comfortable coming into school. I don't really feel comfortable with my accent, my language. And had this been there for her, maybe I would've gotten in more trouble having it was at home, because she didn't even know what was going on, would be, but again, always good. But what I'm saying is, we have to, we have to modify the way that we do things to meet the community's needs, and that's what we do here at Northview. And then last but not least, we have some standard social media pages, Facebook, Twitter, maybe Instagram, I'm not hip on all of that just yet anymore, damn 50, we're good there. But we have, we provide multiple ways for people to connect with us as a school community. And then we also wanna make sure that our kids aren't just engaging with us here in the school, but they engage with the entire school community outside of our doors. So that could be like unified trips to, for bowling, that could be a partnership with the Improve Your Tomorrow program for our young males of color and mentorship and fellowship to ensure that they are seeing themselves as, not only as middle schoolers, not only high schoolers, but college students and beyond. And also, these two programs have really helped our kids connect with each other, but also with the greater school community, and showing them something that they may not have, they may not get to see every single day in their experience. And we also wanna make sure that we're empowering our students and our families by accepting responsibility for each student's success and celebrating in our, in our school community. What that could look like in our school building is our award ceremony at the end of the year. What it could look like is us celebrating our kids on our March Madness tournament and bringing the kids together on an all-school community event, I mean, bringing in CCX News to film an event and participate in that, so they can be seen across our school community as well. And that is really about accepting that student, our student's success. That is very important to me. If a student is having a bad day, that is my bad day, because I'm responsible for them. And that is the mentality that we have here as staff at Northview Middle School, is that if our kids aren't successful, neither are we. And that, that allows us to continue to strive and do better for our kids. And then you can see some, some points of pride related to that as well. When surveyed, 90% of families reported that they have a positive, that our school has a positive relationship with the community. Again, not 100%, but a great place to start, I believe. When asked, 85% of our families have said, our school as a whole is welcoming, welcoming to their family. Again, not 100%, but that's a bad place to start, and we're going to, we're gonna get to 100. And then 88% of our families, on the most recent surveys, said we've got it along at our scholar's school. So the work we do to communicate, the work that we do to bring them together, the work that we do to have our kids participate in the middle school community is showing some success for us, not enough. That's enough. And then last but not least, we do have a good time. We are, you know, a school for 11, 12, turning into 14-year-olds right now, so it can't always be about hammering those books, we have to have a good time. And that's something that we incorporate in our school building all the time. For instance, you are now sitting in the VIP lounge, which is of achievement, and that this is a place where students have a pizza party once a month, and they're honored for academics, they're honored for behavior, they're honored for a wide variety of things, because we can, again, be celebrating, but also understanding that they are middle schoolers and they wanna have a good time here as well. So, that's Northview Middle School.
Alright.
What questions we have? How'd I do on time?
Uh, we're pushing, I've got a couple minutes.
I noticed in the hallways and the classroom, it seems like the signage is very intentional. Is that because it's an avid school, or is that how? I'm not sure that I've seen that in our other middle schools, so.
What signage are you talking about?
Like, like whether it's in the classroom, that there's a ton of achievement-focused type of posters, it's fairly minimalistic, positive reinforcements, it just seemed, it seemed intentional what's on the walls here.
I think one of the things that we can be proud of as our staff here at Northview Middle School is intentionality. If we only have so much time, so much money, so much energy, right? And so we're going to put our things, and we're gonna put our energy, time, and resources, if you will, and we're gonna make sure that it is connected to the commitments that we have here. And that's really, this is my, I guess I'm an 11 year here, and once we started to get really focused on what our intentions were, we were able to use the time, money, and energy and put it in the right direction. So the posters that you see on there is about providing, it's about ensuring that our students have a welcoming space where they can feel like they're uplifted, where they can feel like they belong, so they can feel like they're connected. If you see posters in the hall are related to college signs, that's because we want our students to think beyond middle school, high school, and then on to college or trade school. You know, I always say that 11, 12, 13-year-olds, they can't see past their own knowledge, because it's off there, right? And so we have to be intentional with putting these things in front of them, so they can see what their potential is. Does that make sense?
Yes.
That's your question?
Yes, I did.
Board members, any other questions?
Thank you for your time today.
Yeah, thank you.
Great.
Dr. Heil, I think it's back to you.
Alright. Thank you Vice Chair, Chair Brooks. We're gonna start our next area on long-range financial planning and budget update, and John Morstall will help us out with that.
Alright.
Oh, you'll introduce.
Yep, I got it covered here. Thank you Superintendent Heil, good evening, Vice Chair Brooks, Chair Prince, board members. This evening's conversation is around fiscal year 26 budget, and will be divided into three parts, a general overview of our budgeting process, review of budget adjustment proposals being brought forward for consideration, and capital budget requests.
That's just strong security there, that's what I mean.
Keeps the middle school kids from jumping on different teachers.
Oh, okay. Learning all kinds of things.
Alright. First document that you're looking at, which is on page two of the packet, if you happen to have a packet in front of you, is the diagram that you might be familiar with. This is the long-range financial planning, or LRFP, model that the district uses, which holds two purposes, a solid data-driven and collaborative budgeting process, as well as a comprehensive financial projection tool. Few things I'd like to point out on this diagram, first, the mission is at the center. This is especially important as we make proposals on how we allocate our limited resources as a system. We need to stay focused on that mission. The gray oval around the mission represents the work of our staff, particularly our budget managers, that they do throughout the year to develop budget proposals based on our strategic priorities and the district, excuse me, strategic priorities of the district and the guidance of the school board. The teal boxes on the outside represent the school board's role in the process. Tonight, we're preparing for work that you will see in the box on the left side of the diagram, specifically for the board to approve the budget adjustments that are being brought forward, and then have gone through the extensive LRFP process. The final item to highlight is the box on the top right-hand side, which are the guiding principles for the LRFP process. Next page, page three in the packet, is an overview of our budget adjustment process, how these requests come forward. And as I stated earlier, all budget requests that come forward should align with and support the district's mission and strategic directives. Each proposal you will see under number six on this page needs to be proposed and evaluated using the PARE process, or Program Efficiency Abandonment and Redirection. This ensures that there is intentional process for evaluating the impact of a proposed budget adjustment. Also, based on guidance from the school board back in November, all budget requests should have a cost-neutral effect, meaning for any proposal, proposed increase of budget capacity in a particular area, there should be an offsetting reduction in another area based on an extensive prioritization process by each budget manager. The exception to this requirement, which we introduced a few years ago into the budget process, is an element called a strategic investment. This is a proposal that does not have a budget reduction offset, but because of the potential impact of the request on the mission and strategic direction, the board would be asked to consider using fund balance to fund the request. We're not bringing any strategic directions forward, or strategic investments forward at this time for the fiscal year 26 budget based on our financial projections and maintaining a minimum fund balance policy in future years. The last item will draw your attention to is number seven, which highlights the fact that these budget requests have, on January 24th of this year, gone through our LRFP advisory group, which includes some community members for feedback and evaluation. We will go through some of that feedback at the regular business meeting on February The next page, page four of the packet, is the annual timeline for our budgeting process. The process starts in April every year in our pre-planning phase and ends in June of the next year with the school board's approval of the budget. As you can see, multiple touchpoints of various staff and stakeholder groups, which demonstrate the collaborative nature of the process. You will also notice that the school board has nine different touchpoints throughout the budget process, both to keep you informed, as well as give direction and make decisions. This document highlights the key dates in the budget process, and also note that the items in blue are where the board takes action. At this time, I will turn over to Kelly Manusa, our Director of Business Services, who will walk through some of the base financial information related to the budget.
This next document on the screen is our fiscal year 25 adopted expenditures for all budgeted funds. So the long-range financial planning process has been in place for more than 10 years since its design. It's utilized for all of our budgeted funds, with the exception of our debt service fund, which is shown in the orange section at that point. The pie chart shows the size of our funds in relation to each other. $399 million was budgeted for at the beginning of fiscal year 25. That does not include our grants, such as compensatory, Title I, Achievement Aggression, or any of our ESTR funds that we have had during our previous years. So we bring those budgets to the board monthly for grant approval, once it's given from the granting entity, which is either the federal, state, or local level. And end of December, there was an additional $47.1 million in the general fund of loan with those, and overall, we have $73.7 million that we're counting for so far this year. This next document is called the estimated major cost driver document, so just to orient everyone to this spreadsheet. So up in the top section of this document, you can see our expenditures for fiscal years 25, it's about $315 million. And what we do is we break those down into big, broad categories, salaries, benefits, purchase services, supply. And then to that, we apply a factor of 3% off of our projection model, and we say that we want our expenditures to go no more than that $9.4 million. And so what we do with this document is this is just our starting point, following these expenditures, and we use like a prior year trend to project some of this. And so for fiscal year 26, we fill in this document as information becomes available. So you can see, we have a section at the top for salaries with settled contracts. So far, we have estimated increases in some of our benefit areas that are known, and then we also have in our purchases, some of the areas that I don't know at this point. So if we focus to the bottom of that numerical section in the three column, you can see that at this point, we have accounted for 1.77% of that 3% for fiscal years 26, and that's a similar number to previous years. With that, we'll move on to the next document in your package. So this is our general fund, financial projection model. So a little bit of history for everyone here. This is a strategic priority with two goals or outcomes for long-range financial planning. The first one is to build that framework, so that was that first document that John spoke of with the gray two boxes, with the forward action items, and also all the budget measure action items. And then the second thing was to design a long-range financial forecast model, which is what you see on the screen. So this projection is a high-level visual organizer for our financial forecast. So there are three sections to this projection. The top section shows the revenue expenditures, differences, and then our fund balance, and the fund balance percentage for a seven-year window that begins with actuals for fiscal years 22 through 24. We have the adopted budget, that's the current year that we're in for fiscal year 25, and then it projects out for fiscal years 26 through 29. So you typically see some operational adjustments under that chart, there are none at this time. The assumption section shows the revenue expenditure assumptions being used for fiscal years 26 to 29. We have revenue increasing based on changes in legislation. The revenue will fluctuate between the 2 and 3% for just the general or basic formula allowance, and those estimates are provided by the Department of Education. And then as far as our expenditures, those are projected again to increase 3%, which is consistent with our prior year tactics and being changed at this time. Therefore, if we exceed that 3% for costs, we're outside of parameters, and we would be deficit spending at a greater rate than what is on the projection. The middle section then shows the budget projection, the both revenues in blue and then expenditures in red. So those trend lines are those same colors, and show the trajectory of each of those numbers. So as you can see, those expenditures are projected out of base revenues beginning of fiscal year 25, again, it's our current year, by about $2.2 million. So then the final section on this document looks at our fund balance projection for that same time period. So the green bars represent actual and projected fund balances for each of those fiscal years. The orange bar then shows the minimum fund balance, which is 5%. The orange bar then shows the minimum fund balance, which is 5%, which is set by our board policy. And again, the trend line to show the trajectory of the fund balances related to that minimum. So, as you can see, our fund balance is projected to start to decline in fiscal year 25. So, it's important to remember that fiscal year 24 includes the first year of the holder approved operating referendum increase from November of '22. So, we're currently close to cap on our authority, therefore, we can't use that operating referendum again as a lever to increase revenue to help us reduce the balance in the future run of deficits. So, all of the requests that we're going to be reviewing this evening, as well as the expenditure tactics for enrollment alignment, state leaves at absence, or time off requirements, the expansion of payroll tax for FMOA, and then operating capacity for a new elementary are included in this financial projection model. So, as John showed, we will not decrease any strategic investments this year due to our financial position. So, we're going to continue to monitor that financial projection to maintain that board required minimum fund balance of 5%. So, the good news is, under this model, we are not funding for operational reductions through fiscal year 29. So, here comes the caution to the board. We're still calculating several changes that are going to impact fiscal year 25. For example, we're still in negotiations to renew our transportation contract, which has not been added to this model tonight. Also, the funding clip that we talked about in education is projected for fiscal year 2030 at this time, and we'll likely need to address that shortfall earlier rather than later, so that we can add softer financial banking to that 5% minimum fund balance. So, for fiscal year 2030, that's the year we're talking about right now, that's going to be added to our projection in strength 25. So, included in this model tonight will be great enrollment data and enrollment projections for the future years.
All right. As I mentioned earlier in the budget, each budget adjustment proposal needs to go through the pair process to ensure consistency in the evaluation process. Pages nine and 10 of the packet, you'll see a blank version of the document that budget managers complete, including our questions about the intended impact of the proposal, how the proposal aligns with the strategic plan, how the proposal aligns with our original equity work, how the budget manager is going to measure the effectiveness of the proposal, what impacts the proposal may have on other departments, what legal or school board policies may be affected by the proposal. Once the proposal is complete, the pair goes through an evaluation with the original department, then through all budget managers district-wide, and finally through the LRFP advisory team, which I mentioned earlier that includes community members. At any point during the evaluation period, budget managers can adjust their requests based on feedback from these various groups. Starting on page 11, you will see a summary of all the budget requests. The first section represents the recommendations for the general fund, broken down by instructional and non-instructional categories. The next section includes expenditure tactics, also to provide flexibility for increased enrollment next year, and again, to ensure that we can provide the same level of services we have proposed, a staffing contingency that will only be allocated if enrollment warrants it. We have also added funding to support the new Family That's Believe Act implementation. And starting on page 12, you will see a line-by-line list of proposals, including the summary as provided by the budget manager. I'll go through those, since it's going to be a little bit hard to read them on here. So, we're going to start with community engagement, which is $350,000. Intent is to repurpose site staffing and operational support. Their request is actually paired a little bit with the Department of Teaching and Learning, where their request totaled a negative $350,000 as the offset. So, it's not common that we offset across divisions, but it just happened to work out properly with the repurpose of Crestview going from a primary school to more of a community at focus, even though it's still a grade-level school. So, the changes for the Division of Leadership Teaching and Learning are DLTL. The addition of boys and girls across at high schools, including coaches, supplies, transportation, and event fees. Expenses for this will be offset by participation fees and gate receipts. The addition of one shuttle for the Oseo Education Center students are a transition program for out-of-school job experiences due to an increase in students. If you remember, the legislation, the previous year or the year prior, I forget if it's '23 or '24, added age 22 to the transition program, and so we added, I think, between 20 and 24 new students. So, just needs have gone up, to be able to utilize those out-of-school job opportunities. Add 2.0 FTE special education teachers and 2.0 FTE education support specialists in voluntary pre-K to support the additional seats allocated to Oseo schools, and a reduction of 2.0 FTE special ed teachers and 2.0 FTE educational support professionals for special ed general support. These FTEs will actually be funded through federal special ed grants going forward. The addition of 7.21 FTE social workers to continue FTE that was previously funded with a one-year strategic investment and is now funded with the step-up of the pupil support aid. In the Division of Instructional and Information Technology Team, or I2T2, a zero net offset, add 1.0 FTE cybersecurity analyst, and reduced 1.0 FTE application analyst to provide dedicated staffing allocation to support cybersecurity for Oseo schools. On page 13, you'll see a color-coded results of the feedback from our LRFP advisory team, which includes members of the community. Green represents a positive or neutral feedback, yellow represents areas of concern, and red represents a perspective that the proposal may have a negative impact. The proposals evaluated this year are primarily seen as positive or neutral, with very few areas of concern. Specific feedback was given to each budget manager at the conclusion of the LRFP advisory meeting, and there were opportunities to adjust as necessary. That completes the review of the budget adjustment process, and now we're going to turn our attention to the capital budget review, which we will start with Kelly walking through the financial projection model of capital.
So, again, on the screen is the capital fund five-year projection. It uses zero-based budget approach, meaning that every dollar requested has to have a request attached to it. The projection has now been updated with next year's five-year enrollment projections, which were finalized in January. The top section again shows the revenues, expenditures, differences, fund balance and fund balance percentage for that seven-year window that begins with our actual for '23 and '24, the adopted budget for fiscal year 25, the year we're in, and then our projections for fiscal years '26 through '29. You'll see some operational adjustments under the chart. This line highlights adding 1.7 million expenditures for fiscal projections. And the assumptions section shows the revenue expenditure assumptions of 0% in those for fiscal years '26 through '29. The next section shows the budget projections for revenues, again, in blue and expenditures in red, and then the trend lines of those same colors show the general trajectory of each of those items. And as you can see, expenditures are projected out of base revenue as planned. And then, the final section looks at our fund balance projection for that same time period. And the green bar represents our actual and projected fund balance for each year. The orange bar shows the minimum required fund balance, about 10% for this fund, which is different from the general fund. And again, the trend line shows the trajectory of fund balance is related to that minimum. And as you can see, we're managing the fund to maintain that minimum fund balance of 10%. So, we'll be needing to add, being impacted by a large special assessment, begin with fiscal year 26, where numbers are finalized. As of today, our best estimate, the increase in expenditures of $3.77 million, which will be spread over a number of years, that's a special assessment for our new elementary area.
Thank you. So, just like with the LRFP budget adjustment proposals, you'll see our capital request proposals categorized by division, starting on page 17. I'll go through them, kind of grouping them together here a little bit. So, starting with community engagement, $72,684, primarily for the replacement of two-staff computers, 200 computers for adult basic ed program, purchasing eight computers for facilities scheduling staff, and a contingency for equipment replacements. In the Division of Leadership Teaching and Learning, $3,094,087, to replace sports uniforms and equipment, music, guitar, and marching band uniforms, following a standardized replacement schedule. Purchase instructional materials and curriculum resources. Maintain concurrent enrollment offerings. Purchase media center materials. Maintain our online software resources. Maintain a contingency for the career and technical education program. Maintain capital allocations and replace capital equipment, and pay leases for venues hosting high school commencement ceremonies. For the Division of Human and Administrative Resources Team, or HART, $5,179,922. Maintain our lease commitments for instructional spaces, athletic facilities, flexible rooms, equipment, camera systems, and so on. Contingencies for equipment, special assessments, insurance deductibles, security and emergency management. Purchase capital equipment for the new elementary for interior and exterior maintenance. Replace grounds, maintenance, and custodial equipment. Replace nine automated external defibrillators, or AEDs. For the Instructional and Information Technology Team, I2T2, a zero-dollar impact with the use of E-Rate revenue to maintain our enterprise technology licensing, support internet and cloud backup solutions. So, the total capital request this year for operating capital is $8,347,495. Now, we're moving to the capital projects technology levy portion, the other half of capital. The total here is $14,497. So, starting with Human and Administrative Resource Team, $2,71,154 for replacement of camera and cart access systems, to maintain our camera licenses, the visitor management system, tip line and door intrusion systems, addition of digital two-way radios, a contingency for technology-related security equipment, and add a 1.0 FTE technology support specialist to support security and emergency management technology systems. In the Division of Instruction and Information Technology Team, I2T2, $12,329,343 to continue enterprise technology positions, secondary support positions, and administrative support position. The transfer of .875 FTE instructional technology education support professional staff from special ed federal grants to new tech levy. Maintain enterprise technology licensing, support, software and licenses, internet filtering, Wi-Fi access, and technology repair parts. Maintain existing technology equipment leases. Maintain digital displays, cybersecurity services, phone systems and software, switches and wireless access points, mobile device management software, software subscriptions and licenses, the school notification system, and unified print solution. Maintain a device repair contingency. Purchase and install wireless displays for the new elementary classrooms, and purchase charging cards. All right. The next step in the budget process concludes bringing forward the fiscal '26 budget adjustments and the fiscal '26 capital budget to the board for approval on February 20th at the board meeting. And with that, I will turn it back to Vice Chair Brooks for your question.
Thank you. Board members, any questions?
I said a couple. When is the transportation contract? When is the date? What way of expecting that to be in the projected approximate amount?
We would have loved to have been done, but we are still heavily negotiating. So, our contract is a five-year contract that expires at the end of this school year, so we're negotiating for the next leg of the contract. Right now, we're looking at options for up to a ten-year contract, just depending. But working with multiple vendors can be a little bit tricky sometimes, because ultimately we want to get them as close together as possible, so it's not favorable to the others. We're getting really close, we're hopeful, but, and our goal was to have it for the mid-year adjustment, but I just don't think we're going to be quite ready there yet. So, you will probably see it with the adopted budget when I come back around the table.
Okay. And then, the number of community members? John, how many are on the committee? You were talking about the LRFP.
The LRFP advisory.
Yeah, how many community members are on?
How many community members?
Yeah.
It's our entire fiscal team, so I think we have about 20-some members.
Yeah, three around there.
And so...
And they're community members or staff members?
It's a combination.
How many are like from the community at all?
I'll see how quick I can get that poll.
My go look at it.
Okay.
I think it's close to half.
Close to half?
And they have two touchpoints in this process. They have an early look, because that's what they have requested, because feedback on our continuous improvement. And so, they have an initial look in November, when our budget managers also have their initial look at the proposals, to get feedback earlier on the process. And then, we're also involved in the LFP advisory meeting.
I'm kind of curious about the activities, the lacrosse at the high schools. How did that come up? And then, what's the difference between, it says, "Ad Boys and Girls Lacrosse Programs" at Maple Grove Senior High and Co-op Lacrosse Teams at Oseo and Park Center?
And Emily, I'll take a stab at it, and you correct me with anything if I'm wrong. So, that program was historically funded with boosters and participation fees. It hasn't been funded by the district, and with, honestly, with the addition of boys' volleyball last year, we realized that we weren't funding this program, and so it was brought forward to make sure we're funding all those larger city programs. The difference between Maple Grove and Oseo and the co-op is just the estimated participation of who's in those teams right now. So, today, Oseo and Park Center co-op together to make a lacrosse team, where Maple Grove has enough participation to support their own. So, we're just continuing that. Obviously, the buildings, as they grow participation, I believe we've seen this in a few sports at Park Center, eventually break from those co-ops and come back to a standalone as they're just their school. So, I believe they were doing that with baseball pretty soon.
We do have some co-ops that are outside our district schools, too.
Yeah, we do for a number of sports, you know, and other things.
On technology, just knowing that the needs for technology continue to grow, so Anthony, are you comfortable with the net impact?
Yes, we're feeling very comfortable where the net is, and that was part of the conversation and consideration we had when we went back out for that renewal of the capital projects levy with an increase, looking at kind of what that potential 10-year trajectory might look like. Now, there's all kinds of unknowns, as we were having conversations today about the potential impacts of tariffs on technology costs. So, we're continuing to monitor that, but we're feeling good at where things are at at the moment and where the future looks with that budget capacity.
While it didn't come up for, in the pair process or request for strategic investments, are there any significant curriculum or programmatic changes that are kind of buried within the budget? So, offsetting within the budget, something didn't come to us.
I'm not aware of, you know, really the elephant in the room is that it's just implement the REDACT, and that's really the top priority right now, that that's where most of our curriculum dollars are going. But we also have a schedule that we maintain for when replacements come in. I know it's been pretty heavily used. There've been some pretty big asks of the learning and achievement department over the last few years, because they've had major implementations, and then just to make it fun as a cherry on top, they threw the REDACT changes in. So, they've been very, very busy and diligent, and we don't see a lot of it in their offices with their heads down, looking pretty hard most of the time, because they've got so much to push out. So, the REDACT is a challenge, but I think they're being successful. To come back to the advisory question, there are 13 community members on that committee. Thanks, Mark.
Is there anything that they brought up that wasn't, that didn't make it to?
That didn't make it?
Yeah.
Normally, it's just, it's feedback, and I think we typically get a little more upfront and a few more questions on the first round, and it's a great opportunity for the budget managers to go, "Oh, I didn't think of that." And then, they typically tweak their proposal, and that's why the, on the back end, we see the feedback turns pretty green on the sheet, because most of the time, departments are making little edits as they go.
They might find an answer. They might find an answer.
13.
So, in 2029, we saw the expenditures out of base revenue rate. At what point was it, do we need to be corrective? I guess we had a guess.
Yeah, and so, when we come around, I believe in... in the next year, or in June, you're going to see twenty thirty. Twenty thirty is going to show you a big red number and say that we're under. So so today, it's outside the projection window, which is good news. But we know it's there. And Kelly and I on the on the version of this that we can see, we can see that here and we can see, oh, that doesn't look very.
The the red number being we're we're getting below the five percent.
Yeah, yeah. So so what we'll have to do is make operational adjustments, which we typically use. And at that time, what you're going to see is rather than there being one big operational adjustment, we're going to start filtering it into earlier years because the sooner we act to it. So if we act five years earlier, that and cut a million, that's now five million off this budget because it's a million year. So the more we can do, and I know cutting a million sounds like a really big thing in our district. It's really small because we have almost five hundred million dollar budgets. So so it's very doable. That's probably the better word. I don't want to say make light of a million, but it's a very doable thing. So the more we can trim and make those adjustments early, you know, the our our district is growing, so we're not necessarily seeing staffing reductions. Where declining district needs to right-size every year to readjust so that they're they're keeping their ratios correct. Where we're kind of going the other direction is we're adding staff because we have additional people to serve. So so it's balancing all that out to know, okay, when do we bring that chunk forward? So you'll really see that shift, I think, in June. And also hopefully, we have, you know, the the transportation piece we're trying to get to is a major, major dollar for us. That's going to be multiple millions of dollars that we're not showing right now that will pop on there immediately. Because with a five-year contract, we benefited for the last five years substantially with transportation, where they took major inflationary increases, major increases because of work shortages and having to drive up the cost of of their staff to be able to service us and fulfill the contract. Well, that's going to come back to roost now. And now's their turn to to negotiate with us and say, in order for them to operate, they need this. And so we have to kind of catch up for what we got away with profiting from, for lack of a better term, for a few years. So it's just part of the cycle. So we're trying to mitigate that and make sure we're doing the best we can with the taxpayer dollars that we expect to be a big increase.
Can I just add, so a big difference between our district and a lot of other districts is this process that we developed, we now look forward to in the future. Most school districts look to because that's how schools are funded. They're funded in a biennial. So we get our funding initially in the first year of that biennial. And so then they project any adjustments in your financial situation in a two-year increment. We do it in a four-year increment, and that serves us well because we can project into the future that something's coming and we have more time to react to it. So it's not a threshold adjustment to our system. So it's really served us well and to pivot and change so that we don't have to do those larger budget reductions.
Yeah, I appreciate us being more proactive rather than we got to.
I wonder if it might be helpful to include a greater and maybe an appendix with a greater historical perspective, especially because we have more board members on what our actual increases have been over a larger time price, and that just might put some things into perspective too.
Yeah, I think a lot of the information is contained in our audit report because the back of a lot, twenty or thirty pages have a statistical section that shows a lot of history. How have we done expenses versus revenues? What's the funding that the state's getting this year over here? So I would encourage people to look at the back of that. There's a great amount of detail, all the way down to what our food cost for lunch has been. So you can you can pick that. What's our enrollment? There's there's a whole lot. There's always a ten-year running history built into the back of that book.
I just have a question, like, how how is our district preparing for like any potential changes, given the federal landscape of, I mean dismantling the Department of Education or anything? I mean, how does that impact us or what are kind of mitigation are we using? Because I feel like you're talking more about anything that happens at the state level, you know, we know. I mean, just kind of to your point, Tanya, I mean, what the history has been, kind of where we are. We seem to always be in a pretty strong financial position. We have a super supportive community. And so but I'm curious.
Yeah, so as you as we dig into that, one of the things that helps, so there's a lot of soundbites out about, we're going to cut this and we're going to eliminate that. The things that are important and where the districts get the most federal money comes from three things. The first is ideas. The second is what's the?
And ideas is just because.
So that's titles. It's title in those programs, special education, and then school lunch. Those are the big three federal things we get stuff from. The first two are administered by the Department of Ed, but eliminating the Department of Ed doesn't change anything because they've been passed by Congress. So it takes an act of Congress to change either of those two programs. And the third being school lunch is administered by the USDA. So the the federal portion of that comes through that particular department. Haven't heard anything about that. Now, our our state has then added on top of what the federal gives us to get us to universal meals. So that's separate. That's a that's a state issue. So today, as you look, and I know there's a lot of hype, I'm not all that worried about what the federal dollars are, and it's frankly a smaller part of our budget comparatively. The bulk of our budget comes from the state and comes from our local taxpayers. They pick up.
What percent of our budget is federal dollars?
About ten percent.
So it's still it's still an amount. It's important. But where where you see the bigger issues with with federal is like a federal block grant that flows directly to a school. That could be in jeopardy. We don't have any of those, if any, because everything we do almost always flows through the Department of Ed. So that's a grant to the Department of Ed, who then, you know, we participate through their systems. That's where the vast majority of our federal.
Do you want to add anything, General Counsel, more at all?
Nope.
You did okay.
So our budget process has been extremely successful. It's very focused on traditional kind of finance budgeting with department budgets, cost containment, on zero-based budgeting, and like I said, it's been very successful. I was just chatting with John beforehand of a curiosity about more innovative budget practices that help thoroughly student-centered. And how do we see how our spending is aligned with our educational priorities or focus kind of in the classroom out? So that's just been something that's a little bit on my mind, not not a request for some radical change. But I know that we were talking about our metrics a couple sessions ago. And some of the topic that that came up there was how are we ensuring that our spending priorities are aligned? And what are the metrics to ensure kind of from the operational perspective and financial perspective? So that might be a future item I have interest in exploring, talk that we talk about work session topics and stuff. But again, this has been very, very successful and very good at it. I think maybe there's also some additional ways that we might want to look at our budget and spending and strategic plan.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you. All right, thank you. So now we'll move on to our next topic. So tonight, we're going, our objective this evening is to provide an update to the school board. We go to the next slide. Tonight's objective is to provide an update to you on the degree configuration of two seven nine online. And Anthony's going to start us off. Thank you.
Just to quickly note that this slide and the next slide are flipped from what was in your board packet originally, just to work with the flow a little better. As mentioned in our objectives, tonight, we are focusing on two seven nine online, our full-time K-12 online school. Since its inception in twenty twenty-one, two seven nine online has been under continuous review to ensure it meets the needs of our scholars and community. Last school year, the board requested an update, and we presented our findings in August of twenty twenty-four. Based on your feedback, we have continued our review process. During this review, our team is focused on several key areas, including historical context and enrollment trends, in which we examine the evolution of online learning in our district and track enrollment patterns to understand how two seven nine online fits into our broader educational landscape and financial stability to ensure the financial health of two seven nine online, which is crucial. We analyze the program's costs and funding sources to maintain a sustainable model that supports our scholar's success. We'll take some time to talk about each of these areas in more detail. Back in twenty seventeen, our district began laying the groundwork for what would become a transformative shift in how we approach education. We recognized early on the potential of online learning to expand access to quality education and to tailor learning experiences to meet the diverse needs of our scholars. Our journey truly began with the community-driven development of the Digital Learning for All, or DL4A, plan. This plan was born out of a collaboration between educators, parents, scholars, and community stakeholders, who shared a common goal to ensure that every student in our district has the opportunity to succeed in a rapidly changing world. At the heart of the Digital Learning for All plan is a commitment to personalized learning. We recognize that every scholar is unique, and their learning experiences should reflect that individually. Our plan emphasizes that scholars will experience learning that is personalized in path, place, and pace. This means that we are focused on strengthening teaching and learning practices to better support scholar's success. Personalized learning allows scholars to learn at their own pace, follow a path that suits their interests and needs, and access learning in a place that works best for them, whether it's in the traditional classroom, at home, or anywhere in between. The development and establishment of online learning options in Osceola schools has been many years in the making, with multiple factors converging for the launch of two seven nine online in the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. In twenty seventeen, our school board recognized the growing importance of online learning. There was an emerging interest in developing online options that would allow scholars to access high-quality education outside the traditional classroom setting. Later that year, our district launched the Digital Learning for All, or DL4A, plan that was a significant milestone as it outlined strategic goals focused on expanding online learning opportunities for our scholars. The DL4A plan was not just about incorporating technology in education. It was about creating a more personalized learning experience, ensuring that every scholar could learn in a way that best suited their individual needs, including online pathways at the secondary level. During the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year, the District Parent Advisory Council, or DPAC, presented a specific recommendation to the school board, the development of online learning opportunities for our scholars at the secondary level. This recommendation was a direct response to the growing recognition that our scholars needed more flexible, accessible learning pathways. Lastly, COVID nineteen pandemic had an unprecedented impact on education worldwide. As our district quickly adapted to remote learning, the exposure to online learning grew exponentially. Families and scholars experienced firsthand the benefits and challenges of online education, which in turn increased demand for more permanent online learning options. The pandemic highlighted the need for different learning pathways, reinforcing our commitment to developing a robust online education experience. This timeline illustrates the progress of online learning options as we moved into the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The twenty-one, twenty-two year marked the launch of two seven nine online, our full-time online learning option, also known as comprehensive online learning. With this launch, we began exploring part-time or supplemental online learning, which officially launched last school year as two seven nine Excel. This program allows scholars attending in person at our brick and mortar high schools to take online courses part-time, creating more flexibility in learning options. As we continue our discussion tonight, please note that the information and enrollment data provided are specific to two seven nine online, our full-time online learning option, and do not include students attending part-time at the high school level through two seven nine Excel. I'll now hand it over to Brian, who will provide additional historical context around our marketing efforts and enrollment trends.
Thank you, Anthony. As you'll see on this slide, and as Anthony mentioned earlier, each year, we're reviewing both enrollment and budget capacity for two seven nine online. This particular slide illustrates what our enrollment has been since the inaugural year, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. So you'll see nine hundred and one students that first year. And that first year, we began identifying brand design and architecture for the program. So we worked with CISO to develop that with the staff. And that took us to the starting line of marketing, which which in the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year, you'll see there that we have much more. We took we took that that marketing plan and then implemented it. And so that was carried over the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year, as well as the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And so you'll see that we dropped from nine hundred and one full-time students to four hundred and ninety-one full-time students between those first two years, and then a dip in twenty-three, twenty-four to four hundred and twenty-seven full-time students. And then currently, we're at, there's two different numbers, three sixty-eight was the week before, and three sixty-five was the week that we finished the presentation. So you'll see a discrepancy in that in that. The next slide shows us some of those different aggressive marketing efforts across those two years. So you'll see just a number of examples of what we're trying to do to get it out. And it was successful in driving traffic to our website. It just didn't translate to increased enrollment and application submission. So we have lots of traffic that was happening, but just not the steps, the next step to enroll. So our current enrollment as of as of the last week of January, we have three hundred and sixty-five scholars, seventy in elementary school, ninety-eight in middle school, and one hundred and ninety-seven in high school. So as a part of that review, each year, we're looking to find that balance between the enrollment and sustaining breadth and depth of coursework that allows our students to continue to receive a high-quality education in that environment. And so we each year work to right-size with enrollment and staffing to make sure we're providing that well-rounded educational experience. And in this current year, as we, as it stands right now, we we are currently budget, our budget is currently, we're currently deficit spending one-point-two million dollars to sustain our current offerings.
So for review on our program, a decision was made to reconfigure the two seven nine nine online. So we decided to reconfigure it to a middle and a high school, so it's a secondary school. This will start after this school year, which means our current scholars, students getting out through grade four, will need to choose another school option for the elementary education, and that will begin this fall of twenty twenty-five. So the question may come, why configure? Why? Why are we doing that now? It's not an easy decision. I wouldn't even want to step my foot in the step shoes of right now of our parents and our staff. In just the most general sense, it was a decline in the student enrollment at the elementary level, and then looking at the operational and financial impacts associated with this decline. In comparison, at the middle and the high school level, our enrollment is the strongest. We have more course options that are going to be coming available with synchronous and elective opportunities. And then our secondary also closely aligns to our digital learning for all work, which prior to the pandemic, let's focus on expanding online learning experiences at the secondary level. Once again, it's just important for us to understand as well that our district is not alone. And these elementary declines is statewide trim, and I do believe actually we found out today, unfortunately, Lightfield School District closed their online K-five program today. We'll be closing it this year. So this time, we want to turn it over to Kate for more on how this news has and will continue to be shared. Okay?
So as two seven nine online staff were informed at a team meeting last week on February third, that same evening, an email was shared with parents and caregivers. The message briefly described the change, as well as an opportunity to hear more, in an online meeting the following day. That meeting was then held. We've been getting feedback from staff and families, and also they have some contacts to reach out to if they have questions in the meantime as well. The two seven nine online website has been updated and will continue to be updated with FAQ along the way. A snail mail letter was mailed to our two seven nine online families just yesterday. And today, staff and families district-wide were informed via our e-newsletters, the Insider and Connect. Reminders will continue to be shared with two seven nine online staff and families between now and June. And then most certainly, we want to make sure, this definitely was a great program for our for our families that were a part of it, that we wanted to make sure that we recognize all the great things that have occurred. So we will be celebrating those pieces between now. So we will be celebrating those pieces between now and June as well. So we understand that families have chosen an online school, but we want them to know that there are other elementary school options within the district. 279 Online school staff were given some information to share at their conferences with families last week about this transition. So if they did break that up in conversation, they have some tools to be able to help guide families. Really, if they do want to stay connected with our district, they're just to reach out to the enrollment center. Of course, if they rather to, or if they prefer, we'd love to have them back at the secondary when they are heading into sixth grade as well. Just some notes, because we're going through a attendance boundary change process, just some specifics on whether families live within the district or outside of the district. We do have, just as of this morning, some latest numbers. So there are 56 total elementary families, so these would be the kindergarten through fourth-grade families. Thirty-five is the majority thus far, have committed to one of our elementary schools already. We're still waiting to hear from 20 at this moment. At this time, I'm going to turn it back to Dr. Heil for some closing remarks.
So thank you. One of the things that I wanted to make sure, that we understand is quite a change, and we're going to make sure it's here and at the recording, and we have said it in bold, and it's no reflection of us, or of our elementary staff, and it's no reflection on our program. So we need to understand that it was an outstanding program at the elementary level, as well as the secondary level, and we just needed to do it for other reasons, for operational and enrollment concerns. So our staff and families with questions, they can reach out to Principal Swanson and Bissin, and Chief Assistant Principal Vincent Bissin. And we are here to help on every step of the way, to be able to assist, to where we need to assist. We are hoping that we can bring our families back by sixth grade to be able for them to participate in our secondary programs as well. So I can ask you my own thing.
So as Kim mentioned earlier, we have shared a QR code, and that was embedded in an email as well, to families and staff to be able to provide feedback. So we are reviewing that feedback, and our plan is to create a frequently asked questions document around that. So it's a thought exchange space for families and staff. With that, I think that's the presentation.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the update. I do want to acknowledge we have a number of 279 Online staff in the room. Thank you all for coming, and I know that we also received some emails as well that were read. I know that this wasn't an easy decision, particularly given, I think, the board and staff's pride in this program, you know, the innovation that came with it, the pioneering of 279 Online. I think we all certainly had a lot of optimism according to this program, hoping that it would build. But as it was presented today, I know the writing was on the wall for quite some time that this could happen. So I do have a number of questions, but I do want to turn it over to schoolroom members for any questions that you have.
Reconfiguring a few times? Why is it not a closure?
Sure. You want to answer that, Amy?
Sorry, I answered it here.
You say we're calling it reconfiguring, why is it not called a closing?
It's not a school closure per Minnesota statute.
Because there's no building involved?
So twofold, I would say. One, that statute does reference a physical building. A lot of the other language in that statute references leasing and such that makes it apparent that it's an actual physical building. But even if it were considered, there's no case law on that or interpretation. You know, online schools weren't a big thing when that statute came around, but there have been amendments since then, and it hasn't changed. So there's that. But even if it were considered a building per that statute, it's a K-12, and we're transitioning the lower grades out and focusing on the higher grades. And again, per case law in Minnesota, that is also not considered a school closure when you are transitioning grades, because you still have a school building.
Similar to our physical site changes. When we were advancing the online program, the board voted to appropriate funding for it, but we didn't vote to open a school either.
I just would say, though, I mean, I understand the law, but that's just, that's probably how people maybe feel, you know? So I think that there's a difference, like, to acknowledge that too. Because, I mean, to many families, even if it's 56, I mean, it's still something taken away, like a school closing. So I just, I'm really sensitive to that language.
Yeah, we, and I do want to acknowledge that, just like we did on CCX, I acknowledge there's nothing that you do take away, pain or the change or anything, and they're two separate schools. We also repurposed Crestview, and so we have over, you know, 270, and I'm not comparing to whatsoever, and I'm not saying that, but, and it's not, we're not, we can't even say repurpose the 279 Online, we're just reconfiguring what the grades are.
Yeah, we've had several updates over time, and we supported the spending for marketing promotion. We've had a ton of highlighting of the success of the programs and the quality of it. So it is really, I think, heavy-hearted for us, because even prior to this board makeup, every single board before this, since it began and prior to, like was noted, has wanted to have this option and grow this program. So I'm hopeful that maybe in the future, there may be opportunity where it has high interest again, and we could be open to continuing to evaluate that need in the district.
I mean, that's kind of what I'm wondering. I mean, I think, because I was on a previous board, and this was one of the areas during COVID, before, as you laid out, the historical context. And then during COVID, this is our staff really rallied to kind of, to build this really quality school online. And then I guess, like, with you saying, or, you know, with mentioning Lakeville or some of the other kinds of trending others, online's closing, wouldn't that make ours even more, wouldn't there be an opportunity there? Like, if Lakeville's, I mean...
We really did strive, like, we were paying attention to a lot of those closures, and we did some very targeted, in the areas that we did know about, we did some very targeted marketing in those areas, so.
Yeah, so, like, a year ago, Elk River closed their elementary. We sent out targeted marketing into Elk River to try and pull those kids, and it didn't translate.
It was mentioned, the $1.2 million operating loss. So with this reconfiguration, will we still be operating at a loss, or will we be recouping that $1.2 million into the budget that we just looked at? To be determined.
We have to see how, where the breakdown is, because there's some shared costs, you know, principals and those, we still have those positions, so they're part of it. I can say probably the best answer we'll give back to you, and we'll be thinking that will be, so we can give you an accurate number. I know Kelly has it. Unfortunately, she left her...
So the $1.2 is, like, staffing?
It's all of 279 Online right now, that's running $1.2 negative just in the current year.
Do we have any idea what the 6 to 12 is running? Is it running at a deficit as low?
So we have to break down each segment.
The $1.2 is total?
We're looking at it as the impact.
I, so, I've just been, so like I said, I know that the writing's been on the wall. My discomfort has been sort of in the way that this rolled out. It's sort of seemed to pop up out of nowhere, with very little communication from the board, staff, and families. And so I know that the decision at this point has been made, but I think one of the questions I have, either for Dr. Heil, or even for the board, is how do we have an opportunity other than an email to hear from families about their concerns returning back to a physical school environment?
Can you expand on that a little bit more?
Yeah, so I think my concern with families is they chose 279 Online for a reason. And so what is it that caused them to make that decision to go to 279 Online? Was it safety? Was it the individualized support? Like, what is it that they, 279 Online for, that we're now kind of forcing them to go back to? So those are, I think, some of the concerns that I haven't heard from parents yet, but I don't know that we've really given them an opportunity to provide that feedback, other than the QR code that Brian was giving. I just want to make sure that we're still meeting the needs of our students when they return to the physical school environment, if they choose to stay in our district.
Right. So from what I'm understanding, is when we came, anybody else was here, that this was a strategic investment, am I correct?
Yes.
That we were to look into, and from day one, we were supposed to be looking and seeing how that strategic investment was doing. So is it, God bless that we had this during COVID, where we had, so the drop from, you know, the COVID year to the next year would be just obvious, right? So that would just be when they wanted, with some of our families were comfortable in going back. But it's needless to say, that one thing as well, that even prior to COVID, that online program meets certain needs of a certain number of kids, just like all the different programs we have, meetings meet certain needs. So as we do, when we look at all of our programs and all of our schools, and the point that we have HECMAC, we're constantly looking at the schools of how can we support, how can we do better? CISO coming in to spend time with them, how can we develop the program and how we can develop the school? And working with admin team on, anybody can jump in, on setting what that vision was for the school. So it's at the point where it's also being good stewards of tax payers' dollars, that is also a large part of what we're on, we're looking at it. And like I said, there's no offense whatsoever to the program. But then as we're looking at it, we're trying to keep the program going, adjusting along the way each year of keeping the program going. And it helped me out here, the strategic investment we're supposed to look at in four years, am I correct? And we're at that fourth year. So looking at that fourth year, even after putting quite a bit of money into marketing to grow the program, we just did not get the results that we needed. Even even trying to look at the options of what we could do for K-5, and how we could try to situate that, and working with administration, we had five to six options, that they were telling us those options could not work. So I just want to make sure that we're at this table, and everybody who's recording know, this wasn't a decision, we just said, okay, we can't do this, right? So it was, went into, and working with administration team, well, can we try this? What is this thought? What is that thought? And then it came out, if we were not able to do that, any of those options be able to, at this point, save K-5. So if we get trends where we're coming back, and where we can start to get trends again, because that's what schools do, if we get trends again, and see that in elementary is peaking, of course, that's what we do, and the school system is trying to build that back again. So our goal is continue to build that 6 to 12 program, get that synchronous learning in there, get more kids in there to be able to do that. So it was just a point of just even asking the board, from my understanding, we have four years, we're at our fourth year, and this is where we're at. So like I said, once again, it's no point trying to disappoint staff, no point in trying to disappoint parents. I've been here a year and a half, and I have repurposed the school, and I just had to reconfigure a school. It's not a good job, and that's what you hired me for. So I just wanted to know, a lot of thought went into this, a lot of reflection went into this, and a lot of work with administration went into this. And that's where the end of that four year for the strategic investment would bring in those results.
So I appreciate that explanation, and like you said, the data speaks for itself. We know that enrollment's been declining. So that part wasn't a surprise, and again, like, I think we could have looked at that data and seen if this decision was going to come at some point. But I think for me, I'm still wondering, like, how are students being centered in this? Again, how are we making sure that they're taken care of, and that they're good after this transition? What's happening with our staff? Like, those are a lot of the questions that I don't have any answers to, because there hasn't been a lot of discussion or engagement on the board about this decision before you notified us recently.
So I think maybe embedded in your question is wondering about, will there be, like, transition support for students? Or are we, I think, I think it's more, not the financial consideration, operational decisions, which we've been tracking, I think you're wondering what now?
How we're supporting these.
Well, and I think, I can just add in there, I mean, this is an uncomfortable conversation, but it needs to be had. And I think as board members, we come with a different perspective. Our relationships with our, with so many families, with so many staff, and so it's just like, it does feel, like, this February 3rd date, with all the other things that we have going on, it just kind of feels like we're like, dropped, or, you know, to get, like, this is what's happening now. And then there's a thought exchange, like, after, I mean, I could be wrong, but then there's this, wait, let me finish. There's a thought exchange, kind of, you know, after the decision had been made, and I've been off, so I haven't been privy to all the conversations. But I just think that there is this piece of, like, just how we communicate this. I think since when I was on the board last time, it's always been kind of pushing, like, rub against, like, this marketing piece. It's always been a conversation, you know, just like, how are we getting out there? What are we doing? When is it actually going to be implemented? When are we going to see things on social media? And I did it this summer, like, a lot, you know, I saw things on there. But, so I, I mean, I actually do agree with what you're saying, Thomas. And again, and I think it's just from our perspective, or my perspective as a board member, being in community, just the feedback I receive, and people are rightfully so upset. I mean, it kind of rocks, you know, shakes things up a little bit. The other thing I had kind of around this is enrollment, like, options also, because I feel like then we go, because this came out February 3rd, and then, like, now we're telling families that either they're assigned school, or they can do an upcoming lottery. So then they've also missed this boat of doing an open enrollment option too, so like, they haven't. So they can go to any school within the district if they're...
No, not, not, if they're open enrollment, it has an option, but, so, and just to note already, we have 35 of our 56 kids.
I'm just, I don't want anybody to get defensive. I'm just saying, like, this is just what I'm trying to just interpret what this means, like, how it translates to actual people's lives.
Yeah, so we're doing the exact same thing of how we did with Crestview, of how we met with the Crestview staff and make sure all the support people were there with the Crestview staff. We did the same thing with 279 Online. We did the same thing of meeting with parents. So we're going to have the same celebrations, we have ensured, like, staff have the same opportunities to make sure they stay hired, just like Crestview. So we have had with parents, we had a thought exchange for Crestview. That was just the first start of being able to get those questions in. And then we'll be meeting with administration, and we will be there for the staff, and we will be there for the families. Our whole thing is, how do we meet one-on-one with families? So the same, like, a better term, hand-holding that we have done with Crestview, we're doing exactly the same thing with 279 Online. I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything.
Yeah, it's, everything, just to reiterate what Kim said, everything that was structured with Crestview has been done with 279 Online, the same resources and supports, process around getting questions and developing an FAQ. FAQ isn't out yet, because we need to get all that feedback in from thought exchange to be able to provide responses back to families.
Except Crestview people, I mean, they didn't vote on the particular school, but there was a whole referendum, knowing that there is a school that's going to be repurposed. I mean, there was a lot of, I mean, I don't know if that's the same reason, maybe it is, but it, I mean, that was a lot that went into that referendum campaign that was inclusive of a repurposing of the school. So there was a lot more lead time. And again, I don't know, I don't know what happened in the months prior to, you know, just from what I'm hearing here, but...
So I feel that we've had, as a board, the same discussions and information in both instances. So I don't feel that there's any deviation between the two, the reconfiguration and the restructuring personally. And I think that we are very intentional when we ask for feedback. We would never want to ask for feedback, knowing that we're taking a certain path to a decision, just operationally is going to take place. I think the worst thing that you could do is engage with families, ask for input, and then seemingly disregard it, because, clear, as it was noted, the data and the facts, we've discussed this quite a bit over the last four years. So I would, I would not have, it would not have been wise to seek to engage folks and then look like we're not listening to their feedback, because the operational data is what it is. So I don't see, from my vantage point, over this time period, I don't feel that I've not had the information that was necessary.
Well, I don't want any... Well, I don't want anybody, this is not like a critique, it's more just asking questions. I don't have to get, you know, it's not about defending anything. I think it's more, okay, I just want you to understand that, like it's more just asking, just general, just understanding. Cause I'm coming into this like, kind of like, hmm, you know, so.
According to Dr. Howell, there was engagement that happened and I think that's maybe where the disconnect is. I think that's probably the challenge of having highly competent staff that do all of this work behind the scenes. I think there was apparently a lot of engagement that happened without the board being involved. We have had presentations and updates along the way over the last several years. But I think, as always, I think we get the communication done really well in this district, thanks to Kay and the team. But I think the engagement sometimes is still a bit of a challenge, particularly from the board. So I think, I think maybe that's my, where my reaction is coming from is just going like, again, even though we knew that this was coming, there wasn't any sort of like prep before this decision was made. Nor, you know, intentional engagement between the board and staff and families. But the decision was made and again, I am confident that staff will put some effort into supporting students and staff during transition.
I think to add to that, Thomas, I mean, as, as mentioned at the beginning, we presented to the board in August, an update on where 279 Online was. We presented the enrollment numbers. There was discussion at that work session and direction from the board for us to do further review and study on the programming related to the enrollment trends and viability. And so that's, we took that direction and we moved forward, brought together with the 279 Online administrative team and processed for three, four months, meeting regularly, looking at options and opportunities through a structured process that led us to the space that, that we're here tonight.
I just want to add too, like there are some FAQ on the website that were, that were added. So we're going to take a look further later this week at the thought exchange feedback too and update that with the questions that are in those two.
Any other questions?
I would say one of the things that I think that we've been able to do and will continue to do in the case of Crestview will we have a better sense of especially those families who would like to come back and coming into the schools. There'll be an opportunity for us to work with the administration to find a way that we can support them, support the families. A little different situation, obviously, with Crestview, but that'll be something that gives you visibility on this. I'm hearing that may be a little bit as part of your concern with Thomas.
And the, the school choice enrollment notes that you see, Kelsey, that you brought up? So that is in alignment with just general enrollment? So it's, it's a little bit of a, what's it, what's the word I'm trying to think of? Just, it's hard. It's a distinction sometimes for people. So in district transfers is what we call school choice for people who live in the school district. And open enrollment is what we call for people who live outside the district. So they're not both open enrollment and they have different rules and statutes around them for open enrollment as far as people, believe it or not, people coming into the district have some additional options than people who live within the district at times. For, no, it's all still based on capacity. If a school's full, we don't allow either. But that's why you see the option right now for 279 Online families is consistent with how we're handling in district transfers as we enter into this boundary change, which is we're not allowing them and you can go to your home school. So that's consistent with that. So there's a real tightness as far as in Crestview, since their home school was being repurposed, we decided to give an option to select up to three schools to attend when the change was made there.
I'm just saying that this group missed that opportunity that we, you know, that January.
Fifteenth.
That's what I'm saying.
Is there any flexibility for those, or maybe 20 students?
There are, I believe they're all open enrollment, am I correct?
From other districts?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they go through the open enrollment process.
Yeah, and we're still, even, even the numbers that were brought up tonight were, so this just happened, right? So one of the, to Thomas, to your point, we're trying to like, as folks reach out to the enrollment center, we're trying to capture, what are you requesting? So this is, while it's still happening live, people will still be reaching out to us and we want to find out where people go.
I appreciate the leadership in this decision and I know it was not easy. And I, I know there's like a really strong heartbeat on what's happening in our district in this room. I also know it's a really volatile time right now with the boundary changes. So these changes may hurt a little bit more than if it wasn't already happening. But I am thankful that we have the leadership in our district to make the hard decisions like this. And also leadership that we're, we're all in tune with the hearts of staff and students. And we understand this is not easy for staff and for students and families too. I know a lot of kids that attend online. So thank you for what you've done for those students and what you'll continue to do in our district.
All right, yeah. Thank you.
And our last item on here is just the board meeting calendar review. So we have our actual board meeting coming up on the 25th. And you have a list of what that is. And then we have March, our work session on March 11th. So we do have policy committee meetings for those board members to sit on that on Thursday at 5:30. We will have a work session from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. where we'll be going over their post-statement transparency. That's the work that we had worked on during our PD time. And then we would have guided on the hourwork calendar that we're going to have PD from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. And that, that information will be sent out to the DOD. And one of the things that we will be working on during that time is that structure is getting, giving the board the chance to decide what are some topics and things that you would like to have on future work sessions. So we'll be talking about that as well.
All right, this work session is adjourned at, I'm sorry, questions or comments from board members? This work session is adjourned at 7:30.